Thank you all. Mrs. Burns, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Parentano.
Present.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbach.
Present.
Mr. Kovitz is absent with prior notice. Mr. Marington.
Here.
Mr. Cirillo.
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan. We have a call.
Thank you. Tonight, executive session statement, the board met an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Mrs. Burns, are there any announcements this evening?
No announcements.
Dr. McGee, superintendent for it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Two items, first is the school calendar. This is a normal practice, whether there's a pandemic or not. Neshamani waits till the end of March, when it supposedly has stopped snowing, to set the final school calendar. At that time, the board will set the last day for students. They'll also set the graduation date for the class of 2021. Once we get to that point, we will begin planning the end of the year. Not that we haven't begun planning that at this present time, but once that date is set, it's easier to begin to inform parents as to what's going to happen. That includes the graduation ceremony and many end-of-year events, whether they are possible or not. So presently, we're still under an indoor and outdoor gathering limit in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So that presently has some barriers to it, but hopefully by the end of March, we'll continue to see the improvement in what we're seeing now, and those limits will be relaxed and we can begin to plan. We believe we'll be in better shape than we were last year, which surprised the world, and Neshamani will have an end-of-year celebration fit for those who are ending their year, particularly graduating. So that's the first item. The second item is the continuation expansion of the reopening of schools. There is a proposal, a recommendation from myself and the cabinet for the board to consider tonight. The community has it in email. It has not changed at this point. Basically, there are multi-steps. The first step begins this Friday, where we expand our secondary schools to include in-school instruction on Friday. We'll alternate Fridays. This Friday will be the red team, next Friday will be the blue team, and we will continue that until we run out of Fridays. At the elementary school, on March 8th, or the week of March 8th, it's actually Friday the 12th, we will add that fifth day of instruction back in. What has allowed us to do this is, one, a huge hiring job by our HR department and some certified staff members to get lunch and recess aids, and the continued support of our transportation department, in this extent, willing to not only drive five days, but also work elementary lunch and recess to be able to make that happen. So those are the first two steps. The third step is, on March 5, which is the day after spring break, Monday, March 5, we would end the blue-red hybrid in grades...
April.
I'm sorry, April, thank you. April 5, we would end the blue-red hybrid in grades 5 through 12, and students would be able to return to school five days a week. In addition to that, we'd continue the present Plan D options, which are the Neshamani School District Virtual Academy and our live streaming for those students. Caveats of that, first, if you're following our snapshot status reports, you'll notice that it's kind of tough to figure out at the Shamini High School who's actually going to come on April 5, so I'm asking all secondary students, grades 5 through 12 and their parents, to commit for the rest of the year, basically the fourth marking period, as to what model they will do. At home, live streaming, or they're going to come back, basically, so we can plan appropriately for that transition back. And the final caveat is, this is a plan for April 5. It's not set in stone. It's a hope that the numbers continue to go down, things continue to improve. We began it seven weeks ago as a plan. We're now still five weeks away. We hope to continue to get five weeks of improvement. Our neighbors directly to the north and to the north of them are out in front of us on this, so we'll be able to watch and learn, and if they're successful, I'm sure Neshamani will be able to be successful as well. While we led in September, getting kids back to school earlier and got them back to the hybrid on that first wave, we're going to come in on a later wave on this one, and are on the side of safety and caution. So that is in front of the board to move on tonight or to modify as they see fit, and I don't know if it's the appropriate time, but I'll be glad to take questions if there are any. Thank you, Mr. Parentano.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. That'll bring us to Section 2, Routine Matters. I'd like to make a master motion for 2.01 minutes. 2.01 Treasurers Report. 2.03 Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases. 2.04 Bids. 2.05 Investments. And 2.06 Exonerations.
Public comment. Public comment.
We skipped public comment.
My fault, I apologize. This is our first public comment period. Do we have any sign-ups, Mrs. Burns?
Tara Huber.
Thank you. Please give us your name, your occupation, the area in which you live. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tara Huber, and I live in Huntington Valley, and I'm a teacher at Neshamani High School. I'm also the president of the Neshamani Federation of Teachers. Good evening. The presence and increase of at least three COVID variants in the U.S., the slow and inconsistent statewide rollout of vaccines for all A1 and 1B public school employees, and the seven-day positivity rate in Bucks County of 143 per 100,000, which puts us clearly in the red zone according to the CDC guidelines, are all factors which continue to cause health and safety concerns to our certified staff members. On November 30, we began the in-person Monday through Thursday model for students in the elementary grades K through 4, while secondary continued with the Monday through Thursday blue and red hybrid model. Both the elementary and secondary education models included synchronous learning for all students on Fridays. The plan to expand to alternating blue and red Fridays in school at the secondary level on February 26, while expanding to five days a week of in-school instruction for grades K to 4 for the week of March 8, is a bit premature, while there are still too many unknown factors and current conditions. Based on the facts and information that we have at this time, it is the recommendation of the Neshamani Federation of Teachers to the Neshamani Administration and the School Board that in-person education remain at the four-day blue-red hybrid model with Friday synchronous learning for all secondary levels, and the elementary levels remain at the current four-day all-in model, which also includes Friday synchronous learning for all elementary students. We are aware that you plan to vote on this next phase this evening, and we ask that you support no change to the current elementary and secondary educational models at this time due to the more contagious strains of COVID, the present rate of community spread, and the lack of access to vaccination for school employees at this time. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with the district on the school's reopening program and the health and safety plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
That was it.
There's no other sign-ups at this time? Is there anybody in the audience at which is to approach the podium and make public comment? Seeing none, now we'll move on to Routine Matters, Section 2. I'd like to make a master motion for 2.01 minutes. 2.02 Treasurers Report. 2.03 Check Register. 2.04 Bids. 2.05 Investments. 2.06 Exonerations. A motion's been made, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes 8-2-0. Mr. Sullivan, Section 3 Personnel, master motion, please.
I'd like to make a master motion to approve item 3.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. 3.02 Leaves of Absence. 3.03 Revised Returns from Leave. 3.04 Co-Curricular Resignations. And 3.05 Co-Curricular Appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Motion's been made, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes 8-2-0. Mrs. Hollenbach, Section 4 Personnel, master motion, please.
I'd like to make a master motion for 4.01 Appointments. 4.02 Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. 4.03 Leaves of Assignments. 4.04 Revised Leaves of Assignments.
Thank you. A master motion's been made for Section 4. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Motion passes 8-2-0. Mrs. Hollenbach, would you read 5.01, please?
5.01 Sunday Facility Usage. Whereas, according to Board Policy Number 800, facilities, fields may not be scheduled on Sundays without School Board approval. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves Sunday usage for... Do you want me to read them all individually?
Yes, you should read them.
Langhorne Neshamani United Soccer Club has requested Sunday usage for Maple Point's Fields on Sundays, March 21, 2021, through December 31, 2021. Middletown Athletic Association has requested Sunday usage for Walter Miller Fields on Sundays from January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2021. Our Lady of Grace has requested Sunday usage for the Neshamani High School Stadium on Sunday, March 28, April 11, April 18, and April 25. And Lower Southampton Athletic Association requested Sunday usage for the Tewanka Elementary, Fertabar Elementary, and Proquesting Middle School Fields on Sundays, March 1, 2021, through December 31, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. A motion's been made on 5.01, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Motion passes 8-2-0. Mr. Sullivan, could you read 5.02, please?
Site Feasibility Survey. Whereas the Neshamani School District desires to determine the feasibility and suitability of the Neshamani School District Maple Point School Grounds for the possibility of adding a new building on the site, including but not limited to a new elementary school, and whereas preliminary civil engineering is needed to explore site conditions that may include but are not limited to the site soils conditions, environmental conditions, availability of site utilities, local site restrictions, zoning, environmental wetlands and pen dot restrictions, highway occupancy and permit, and other impacting factors to determine a location, if practical, for construction of the new building. Whereas the district desires to proceed in incremental steps to first determine feasibility and suitability, and then to select a possible location for the new building. Whereas upon determination that a site on the Maple Point School Grounds is found to be suitable for the construction of a new building, additional civil and environmental engineering will be required upon approval of a location on the site by the district. And now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani School District authorizes the district superintendent and district business administrator to enter into an agreement subject to review and approval of the district solicitor, which provides for preliminary civil engineering services in incremental steps to determine the suitability and feasibility of the Neshamani School District Maple Point School Grounds for the construction of a new building with a qualified civil engineering firm in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. A motion's been made on 5.02, may I have a second?
Second.
Second.
By Mrs. Boyle, was that you, Mrs. Boyle?
By Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
I just want to be clear, this is simply an appointment of a civil engineer, because the legalese may confuse the issue. It's simply to check the site over for feasibility. That includes perking the land and zoning variance and traffic studies, et cetera. Just want to be clear on that.
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Allen. This is just an investigation of the site suitability to support another building. At the same time, we are also, as outlined in the district's press release, at the same time, we are also seeking from our other professionals an evaluation of the Pearl Buck site as well. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Motion passes 8-2-0. Mr. Allen, would you read 5.03, please?
For 5.03 Settlement Agreement. Whereas the Neshamani School District has outlined a private and confidential agreement with the family of student number 7X9, now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves providing for the educational programming as specified in said agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. A motion's been made on 5.03, may I have a second? Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes 8-2-0. That'll bring us to Section 6. Mrs. Boyle, could you please read 6.01?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.01, which is the second reading of policy. Whereas the first reading of policy 247, 249, and 907 was completed at the public work, board work session on February 9, 2021. And whereas the following revised policies are being recommended by the Policy Committee for Board Adoption into the Neshamani School District Policy Manual. And now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the policies listed above for adoption as part of Policy Series 200, Pupil and Policy Series 900, Community in the Neshamani School District Policy Manual.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. A motion's been made on 6.01, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Motion passes 8-2-0. Mrs. Bowman, Section 7, could you read 7.01, please?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion, 7.01, Reopening of Schools' Health and Safety Plan Modifications. Whereas the Neshamani School District is required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education to approve a reopening of schools' health and safety plan, and whereas the phased reopening plan timeline has been expanded to include, on September 8, begin Plan C, online instruction through October 2. On October 5, begin Plan B, Blue-Red Hybrid. On November 30, begin Plan A, Students in School for Grades K to 4, Monday through Thursday. On February 26, begin alternating Blue-Red Fridays in school at the secondary level. And on March 8, expand Plan A to five days a week of in-school instructions for K to 5, maintaining live streaming and asynchronous options. On April 5, conditions permitting, eliminate the blue-red hybrid in grades 5 to 12, and begin Plan A, Students in School, five days a week, maintaining live streaming option. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the Neshamani School District reopening health and safety plan as amended.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 7.01, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Just to be clear with this, if we approve this tonight, it doesn't mean we can still change course. It's just to give administration and staff the opportunity to prepare so that we do this, because we can't just flip a switch. We need to get everything ready to do this, and we can stop this at any point in time if we need to. Is that correct?
Dr. McGee, please.
That is correct. This is a timeline set in place that gives us when it was proposed, seven weeks. Now we're at five weeks, so we can prepare for it, move furniture back in, do the necessary things, and watch the conditions between now and then. The board meets two more times between now and that date, which it can act as it decides based on those conditions, and if it should happen after that last meeting, I can act until the board can act in a more official term. So there's many fail safes, for lack of a better word.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none at this time. Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Motion passes 8-2-0. That'll move us to Section 8. Is there anyone that has any other board business? Seeing none, this will take us to a second period of public comment. Is there anyone wishes to approach the podium for a public comment?
Keenan Sporny.
Hello, sir. Just give us your name, area in which you reside, your occupation. You have three minutes, and please note personal attacks. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kellin Sporny. I'm a Langhorne resident. I'm a civil engineer, so was interested to hear your discussion there. I was born and raised in Feasterville, went to Proquesting Elementary, Middle, graduated from the Shamini in 2000. Proud member of the Shamini Sports Hall of Fame for volleyball, won district championships in soccer. My mom's a teacher for 30 years in the district. My wife is a teacher for the past 12 years. We have two kids who'll be attending Pearl Buck next year, about as Neshamani as it gets. First, I wanted to say sincere thank you to Dr. McGee for doing such a great job in navigating through the pandemic, thoughtful decision-making, clear direct communication to the community. Same for the teachers, taking completely out of their comfort zone, working at an incredible breakneck speed. I see it firsthand. They've done an incredible job. Second, I read recently about the potential for building a new elementary school on the grounds of Maple Point. I say it's about time. Bussing kids all the way down to Pearl Buck just doesn't make sense. Living 15, 20 minutes from your elementary school is not ideal. School here is perfectly centralized, just look at the district zoning map, it's pretty clear. We will cut travel time by half or more, fuel-saving costs for buses, the incredible grounds here at Maple Point, this will be a major improvement for quality of life for the kids, for this generation, for the next generation. Tewanka's price tag was about $30 million. I assume this cost will be less since there's no existing building to knock down and dispose of. I also assume that you're looking at renovating Pearl Buck as an option. As a licensed engineer in five states, I know designing and constructing new is a lot easier than modifying old. I also question your $25,000 price tag, this isn't on my write-up here, but I'm not sure where you brought up with that, but if you're looking at about a $20 million cost for a new school, that's about 0.1% of the cost. You may want to reinvestigate that and see if that's going to give you everything you need for the decisions that you need to make. Long-term, 20 years out, a new elementary school, great investment for the kids. If the metrics align financially, please do the deal. It's a no-brainer. Third, I know the pandemic is front and center right now, I get it. However, I'd be remiss to not bring this item up. To me, and I'm sure to a lot of others, it's time. It's time to remove the Neshamani name from our brand. We've spent almost $500,000 to defend an indefensible cause. We completely miss out on the opportunity to be leaders, to make the change prior to others. At this rate, we'll be the last ones holding the ball. We don't want to be that. We all know the Redskins name was never meant to be offensive, it was meant to be prideful to the natives that lived in this land, but let's be honest, Redskins is incredibly offensive. With everything going on in the world, Black Lives Matter, LGBTQ in 2021, it's universally recognized that all people should be respected to inspire diversity.
Please finish off, please. Go ahead, you can finish off.
So this is not something that needs to be decided in the court of law. There's right and there's wrong. Clearly, this is wrong. I don't know the answer personally. I think the name's natives, Neshamani natives, has a great ring to it, and it holds on to honoring the Native Americans that lived here that we meant to honor in the first place. I'm not sure how that would be viewed by our community activists. How much more of our hard-earned money are we going to spend fighting for a cause that is way out of touch with the times, when the money could be used toward a new state-of-the-art school for our community? I think it's time to make a change. It's really, it's a no-brainer. I call on all of you, like I tell my two kids, be a leader. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to approach the podium for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to board comment. Are there any board members that wish to make board comment this evening? Go right ahead, Mr. Allen. You know, I got written right here on my big pad, "Dr. McGee." Go right ahead, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Actually, Mrs. Hollenbach's question during the motion was my superintendent's comment as far as the timeline between now and the reopening, so.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, go right ahead.
Yes, I want to reiterate that, that we are listening to administration, our teachers, taking it all into consideration, and we're all trying to get our students back in school and do our best for them. It's an uphill struggle, and it's constantly changing. And I just want to assure everyone that we are with an abundance of caution creeping slowly ahead. There may come that date when we decide this is where we're at and we're going to stay there, but we have to do our due diligence. I've been using that word a lot, but it's true. We need to look into it, we need to see, because our job is to educate our students. Our job is to do that in our facilities. That's why we've invested in them. But we need to do it as safely as possible. We need to follow the guidance of the CDC and our Bucks County Board of Health and move forward cautiously, but we are. I also want to assure the parents that have reached out to myself and many other members that we have certainly not forgotten our senior class, and that is why I had asked Dr. McGee to mention that it is on our things to do that we are considering options, and a lot of the ideas that were brought forth out of necessity last year will very likely be incorporated this year. But again, before we were deluged with, you know, what are you doing? You forgot them? We have not. But again, hopefully the snow is over, and we will be on track to discuss all that in March and move forward on that. And I believe that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to make public comment this evening? Mrs. Bowman, go right ahead.
I just wanted to respond to Ms. Huber's comments on behalf of the NFT, and I just want you to feel confident that we are not entering into any decision lightly without considering the health and safety of our teachers as well. Our students are suffering, they need to be back in the classroom. They have lost almost a complete year of instructional time, live with their peers, face-to-face with their teachers, and you know the value of being face-to-face with your students. The increase of their success is almost 80%. So we have made upgrades to the ventilation system, we are watching the situation, but the numbers in Bucks County are dropping drastically. So I would highly encourage the NFT organization to please be in touch constantly with the Board of Health, to see if there is any opportunities to tap into the surplus and get our Neshamani teachers a clinic to be vaccinated. and get our Shamani teachers a clinic to be vaccinated. But please, no one is... I don't want you to leave here tonight thinking that, you know, we don't consider your health and safety first. You know that we absolutely do. We are watching the situation carefully, and there is still time to revise this if need, if conditions worsen. So that's all. And I hope everybody stays safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Anyone else? Seeing none, just to close, we have at heart everyone's concerns, our teachers' concerns, our support staff's concerns, primarily our children's concerns. We are following the science. I believe that Dr. McGee and the staff has outlined from day one a very pragmatic approach to getting us into the best educational environment that we can put our children in. In saying that, we also have invested heavily, as Mrs. Bowman mentioned, in providing a school environment that, except for maybe wrapping everybody in a plastic bubble, is probably as safe as it's going to be able to be. We understand your apprehension. You're not discounting it. And we also appreciate the fact that both the teachers and the support staff have worked, I'll say side-by-side with us since the beginning to try and establish these programs stay in place for our children. But there is going to come a point where we'll have to make a decision. Where, as Dr. McGee says, they'll have almost five weeks before we come to that point. And we have two more meetings to keep abreast of the situation as well as the guidance that may come, as Mr. Allen mentioned, from the CDC and from our Bucks County Health Department. So we do appreciate your input, and we do appreciate the amount of effort that you've put in so far to try and educate these children under very, very difficult circumstances. And as I've said in the beginning, this has to be an all-team effort. None of us can do it without the other. And so far, I think Shamani has been very successful under this pandemic, which has stressed everybody to their limits. To address the gentleman spoke at the podium about the civil engineering. Being a professional yourself, I'm sure you're acutely aware of the situation. We are taking small incremental steps in this investigation. We know what the civil engineering would cost on a total project. This is just to prove the first phase of the suitability of this site. Can it support the building? Can the utilities provide for the building? If we do, and as the motion mentioned, move into the next phase, there will be additional needs for additional civil engineering. And the cost, of course, with that, will go up if we move that way. And as I mentioned, at the same time, we are having our professionals also evaluate the Pearl Buck, what that would need to provide similar support as far as renovations that it desperately needs and sustaining reprogramming at that school. That school was built at a time that was, I guess, where it's experimental and had to lay out a school for public education, and it's very challenging. And that will have a lot to do with our decision-making process as well. So hearing nothing else from the board, I'd like to call the meeting to a close. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes 8 to 0. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you very much.